Littleton City Council to order on March 7th. Clerk, roll call please.
Sorry, Mayor Schlochter?
Here.
Mayor Protem Reden?
Here.
Councilmember Barr?
Yep.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Here.
Councilmember Grove?
Here.
Councilmember Milliman?
Here.
Councilmember Valdez?
Present.
Alright, we have a quorum. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Item 3 is the approval of the agenda. Councils had a chance to review it. Are there any changes? I am going to propose we move the item 6. The proclamation's up above item 5. If there's no objection, we'll just continue in that order. Great, sounds good. Alright, item 4, comments and reports. First up, City Manager, any report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One briefly tonight. Probably doesn't need an announcement, but as today is our special election day, I'll just let the council and the public know that I've heard a report from our Elections Operations Center that they are, that their processing has been proceeding well. And they will be reporting results this evening as soon as they are available. They'll be unofficial results. Those will be, of course, posted on the city's website. There will be a link from the main homepage to the election tab. So that's how that will work tonight. Our city clerk had said that she thought, you know, could be by, probably by 9:00 or 9:30 tonight, but...
City Attorney, any report?
No, but I will, I will just add, Councilmember, or excuse me, City Manager Becklinburg's comments that when we have these elections or special elections, we hire kind of outside folks to come in, election officials to come in to monitor all this, kind of under the supervision of our city clerk as well as an election official. So, we'll find out.
Great, thanks. I'll start with Mayor Protem.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody, for being here today. So, Councilmember Bridgen, I usually attend the historic downtown Littleton Association's meetings each month. And this month, well, last week, there was a very strong palpable fear of the chronically invisibly unhoused in our community from many of the business owners and some of the residents. They had fears for their safety, for their employees' safety, for the customers' safety. There were also a lot of ideas proposed for solving this issue, some legal, some not legal. I also noticed that some of the stories shared were true, and some of the stories were hyperbole. And I think it's important that we bring our community together on this issue in a very equitable, structured capacity so that we can truly dialogue it. I think we've been doing it in one-offs here and there. And I really think as a city, as in a city council especially, we gotta be leading on this. And I think that means not relying solely on our nonprofit partners or the DDA, but really us taking center stage and leading and making sure business owners and residents and the people, and those nonprofit partners know who to go to, how to go to, what is the scope of this issue? What are the facts? And how can we come together and really have some deliverables? So, with everyone's permission here, if we're all in agreement, I'd like to direct our city staff to actually put something together, maybe in the next two months, the next six weeks, depending upon what's a reasonable timeline. I think it should start with a community meeting, bringing in enough time to get all the people to the table so that they know that we're taking over this issue and that their voices can be heard, and we want to hear it. Also, that we want to hear ideas that the community has as well. Ideas that we can take back and then kind of vet, and then come back to the community with something that's very reasonable and manageable and actionable. I'd also like, if we do have a community conversation, I want it professionally facilitated so that the conversation can stay structured, so it can stay productive. And I think it's just important that we stay united together, you know. Councilmember Valdez, you've mentioned this. Certainly, you know, Councilmember Driscoll, this came up at our retreat. You spoke very passionately about it as well. And, yeah, I just, what does everyone think? Does that make sense?
What do you, what do you mean to take over versus nonprofits? You said something about, what do you mean there?
Yeah, so, I think we need, right now, we've, we've been kind of leading, or leaving it up to our nonprofit partners to sort of educate our community. And I don't think that should be the sole voice. I think we should be, of course, hearing their input, but actually then being the leading voice, voice to our partners and to our business owners, saying, okay, this is what we've heard. These are, maybe there's some policy recommendations in there as well that we just aren't aware of, that we should vet and that we should hear. I also want some of our nonprofit partners who do serve our unhoused, I want them also to speak to us and educate us and our community members as well before we make any kind of big policy decision. But I think we should have something policy-oriented that should come out of this.
Councilmember Grove?
This is a very real issue for our community. And I think we have to take this in, along with our other priorities that we came with in the retreat. To me, this falls under housing, if that makes sense.
Safety, which was number two.
Yeah, so, I know staff has probably been working on flushing out those priorities that we came up with, and I think that should be, not a one-off, but put in context of overall what we're working on. That's my opinion.
So, you're asking for a, like, a forum or a meeting of one time, or ongoing, to start the process with that, or have staff come back with some recommendations on how to facilitate some of these discussions?
Uh, no, I think, I think we need to act on this quicker, and I'm not so sure that...
That's what I'm just asking, what is, what is the action?
I think the ask is, I want a community, a community meeting organized within the next couple of weeks, like, maybe by the end of April. That at least is an initial start for those community members to be heard. And then, kind of have a plan forward and a communication strategy of what that would look like if we were to pursue some policy recommendations and a timeframe. What's happening is this fear that's in our community is contagious. And we need to address that, that emotion, and manage that emotion so that those folks can feel a little bit more settled in themselves. So, I think six, next six weeks, I would like to see some sort of community meeting to start.
Yeah, I think a community meeting would be a good idea. We'll see what staff can...
And if I may, you know, one of the things that I'm somewhat confused about, maybe you are too, is our legal recourse, what the city can and cannot do. And I think that's, you know, up to our city attorney to, perhaps a study session, to say, you know, this is why we can do this, or this is why we can't do this. And, so we at least have a framework as to what we can do.
So, does everyone feel comfortable having staff kind of, or the city manager, do you want to respond to kind of what you're hearing?
Well, I'm hearing that, you know, tonight, in this forum, it's really a council referral, just checking for support, majority support. I'm hearing the request or potential direction from council to plan a meeting. So, you know, I think we can do that if the council's ready to give us that direction of the majority. Or we could, you know, plan, you know, a study session. We have this on our agenda, the broader question of strategies to work on this policy issue. We could, you know, keep planning that, that study session. A meeting could be a product of that. But I'm hearing some urgency from, from Mayor Protem Reden, so I think that's what she's checking for tonight.
Yeah, I think having a community meeting first and then a study session after the fact to report back to council on how that went. Does anyone have any objections to having a community meeting that staff kind of...
No objections. The urgency in my mind is, we're coming in the summer months. This is when, you know, businesses, where we start having a lot of events, and if people are afraid to come downtown, to spend time at Beagle Park, to just be around downtown, that's concerning to not only city council, I think most people here, but especially concerning to business owners.
Councilmember Valdez?
Yeah, I get a part of that. I would like to see from our city attorney, finally, some information regarding the panel handling. It's sort of related to this topic, too. I've been waiting for quite a while on this. Maybe you can come up with it by the time we have this. Thank you.
Okay, does that...
Seeing support to plan a meeting.
Yes, that's what I'm hearing, okay. Anything else, Mayor Protem?
That's it for now, thank you.
Councilmember Grove?
Nothing quite so dramatic. A couple announcements. On April 8th, I'm going to have a citizen meeting. It will be held at the Bemis Library from about 10:00 to 11:15. Donuts will be served. It's an opportunity to meet with me and some of the other citizens, to hear what's on your mind, and we'll have a roundtable discussion so that you can give some input into some of our priorities that we came up with in the retreat. And speaking of the retreat, and I'm sure other council members will speak to us, we came up with five priorities during our day and a half event where we met with a facilitator and, you know, did the whole flip chart thing. And they are, the priorities are housing, safety, infrastructure, economic development, and the environment. So, that was a very productive day and a half, and you'll be hearing more about that later. Another thing I attended was the CML Legislative Workshop, and there were some other council members and staff there. That was on February 16th. And there was themes about the legislative priorities in this session. And they centered around substance abuse, land use, auto theft, specifically auto theft, trying to increase penalties, not based on the value of the vehicle. In other words, a less expensive vehicle had the same, they're trying to get the same penalty as a more expensive vehicle. Housing, criminal justice, safety. And I think that you heard that now they're trying to get a bill passed to allow for retailers to have more events where they have alcohol, like for a wine and cheese at an art studio or something like that. Also, there was a discussion of water and scarcity, and we heard from Mayor Hancock, some lobbyists, and a panel discussion. The next day, as liaison to CML, I then gave input along with other people from other councils on which bills we want to support, or we felt neutral, or we opposed. And one of the ones that was, it was pretty unanimous in most cases, but there was one is the 27-cent retail delivery fee that was quite controversial because this kind of impacts business. And one of the things people felt very strongly about is how it impacts them and the reporting. And they're trying to get it so that the option would be not to have to pass it on to your customer. So, that was another thing that's happening this session. Another event I went to last month along with the mayor was the State of the Highline Canal. And they did a short presentation, and one of the things that pertains to us is they're asking for federal funds for an underpass at Arapahoe and Broadway. And so hopefully, we'll get that, and it will help with safety. It's a very expensive project. It will take a long time, but the process has started, so that's all good. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Barr?
Yeah, a few announcements. So, I'd like to start off by thanking the Next Generation Advisory Committee. They forwarded on a memo to all of us on council here with their housing policy memo, some just very brief recommendation, brief memo regarding some of the future work that the Next Gen Committee has planned in the future. And also complimenting this council and previous councils on the work that they have done for housing affordability thus far. So, the full memo will be posted with the packet, but I just want to say it's worth exploring some of the things that the NGAC is going to be looking at in the coming year. Secondly, Dr. Cog held a work session on March 1st, discussing population trends throughout the region. I know our, we just held a session on this as well, but I figured I would report out on some of the key takeaways from this Dr. Cog session. Some of those being that Denver, you know, the kind of first and glaring point was that Denver Metro is not in a, quote, "free fall" in terms of our population, that we are actually not going to see a decrease in population, but growth will be slower in the coming three decades than it was in the previous three decades. And that we will see no growth in the child population in the next three decades, which I found to be rather alarming. The growth rate of the 65 and older population is going to be seven times faster than the under-65 population. And so for Dr. Cog, that has multiple implications because they are the area agency on aging. Those services that are being provided in terms of healthcare and access to goods and services, that is going to need an increased investment, as well as looking at diversity in terms of mobility options for those who are over the age of 65. So, this is weighing heavily on Dr. Cog's mind in the future planning. Lastly, I do want to report out on Littleton Public Schools, sending out a congratulations to Dr. Todd Lambert for being selected by the LPS Board as our district's next superintendent. I had the privilege of being on a citizen review committee for the finalist candidates, and I have to say, I was impressed by Dr. Lambert's breadth and depth of experience. And I know he'll be an excellent leader for LPS, so I want to first off say not only congratulations to him, but congratulations to the LPS Board and the entire district. We noticed there were numerous comments on how well managed and how transparent and how accessible the superintendent's search process was. So, I'm echoing those sentiments to say that it was a job really well done, and that the quality of the candidates we attracted was in part due to how excellent our school district is. I do want to take a moment, too, to pair this with a survey report that just came out from LPS. It's the LPS School Climate Survey. And if you, you know, don't have kids in school, or if you do have kids in school, it is worth actually diving into these annual reports and looking at the health, well-being, safety, and educational attainments of our folks in our school system. Overall, again, LPS is a fantastic school district. You can't, you know, there's no argument against that. But I want to say that, you know, part of the discussion with the superintendent candidates, some of the responses that Dr. Lambert gave in response to the fact that our schools are reaching a point of extreme strain and stress, and this is from the child level, this is from the family level, this is a strain on our educators, this is a strain on our administrators, it is a strain on our budgets right now. And it is not a time to be, I would say, resting on our laurels just to say that we are one of the top school districts in the state. There are areas of improvement, and I'd say this survey pointed out some of those areas of improvement, that we can be doing a better job at reaching our LGBTQ youth. We can be doing a better job at reaching our non-white students throughout the district. And those were some of the kind of key takeaways from the report. So, I'd encourage you all to look at it when you have the chance. And again, a job well done to the LPS Board and Dr. Lambert. And that's all I got.
Thank you. Councilmember Driscoll?
Yes, as some of you might know, I am the council liaison for the Arapahoe Community College Paramedic Group down the street. And for those that aren't aware of that, that class, that program, it's a phenomenal program. And the director of EMS, Dr., or excuse me, Dennis Eggerly, reached out to me and asked if we can get, if he can get support from city council with a grant, just a letter recommending the ACC, they're going after an improvement to their annex building to help create a state-of-the-art healthcare simulation center. So, I'm looking for maybe some nods from, from city council that we would be behind that, and hopefully, they can get some money. That's coming from the congressional spending bill that was passed in Washington sponsored by Hickenlooper and Bennett. So, thank you for that. I think I saw everybody pretty much in favor.
Just a letter of support, no funding or anything, is it?
No funding, we're just looking to draft a letter in support of that, and they needed a letter from, from the city, so I think we're in good shape there. So, thank you for that. I also attended the Littleton Business Chamber. You know, we have a great director over there, also in Corey Lumdok. And there's some, a couple of things coming up there. They got March Business After Hours over at Ned Kelly's on March 8th, 4 to 6. A lot of these things I'm going to mention, you have to register for so they can get a head count. The email address, if anybody's interested, is PR, as in public relations, at littletonbusinesschamber.org. So, if you're interested, you can see all their events coming up. The other event I thought was an interesting one, if any of you are interested in running for city council, not you, Pat, you're termed out. But anybody else interested in, in running for city council, they're going to be hosting an event on March 21st, and that'll be from 4 till 5:30. And it's, I think, they're going to invite some of us to be speakers at that event. They haven't invited me yet, so, but...
Maybe should they invite the speakers before they have an event?
You would think, you would think. But I, it's going to be basically hearing from, I think, some of us about the pros and cons of how to run for city council, which you're, which you're getting yourself into. So, if you're interested in learning more about that, go sign up for that. And then, finally, Littleton Downtown Development Authority, you know, that was just formed in, really, for the last four meetings, and we have another meeting Wednesday night. It's really just been, been going through rules and procedures, trying to get our, the legal piece of it behind us. Obviously, the board has been sworn in, so there's not a whole bunch of updates on Littleton Downtown Development Authority. But I know, I know the crew's really anxious to start diving into those things that they can actually start spending money on and start showing, you know, making a difference in downtown Littleton. So, that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Milliman?
I have fun announcements. So, I attended the Fine Arts Board meeting on the 16th of February. The city's hired a part-time public arts administrator who I believe has already started. And she's going to be helping initially, I think, with the mural program, eventually with the Arts and Council Commission, and especially on the lodgers tax. So, we're very excited to have this new staff person on board to help with the arts in Littleton. The mural program, the Mural Crawl is coming back. There's several sessions in late April, early May. Please look at the Fine Arts Board website on the city's website, and you can see when those dates are coming up. But I heard it's really fun. I know I'm going to be signing up because I missed the last one. The mural at Town Hall Arts Center, I believe, it's still on, it's still on task. Priming comes first of that south wall, and then the artist will take about two to three weeks to finish it. So, there's going to be a time, like a timed camera, so you can actually watch the progress of this project as it goes along. It's going to be really, really cool. My mother-in-law, I took my mother-in-law to the History Museum on Sunday to go see two fantastic art exhibits, and I highly suggest that you go, recommend that you go. One of them's Nature's Blueprints, and the other one is an exhibit by Christopher Warren called Reinterpreting, Recreating Art, Nature. So fabulous. I highly, highly recommend you go and spend the afternoon there, and it's free. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Valdez?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, thank you to Mayor Protem for elevating that issue. I think that's a good issue to really jump on. It's been hanging out there for a while, so thank you. Let's see, regarding the CML Conference that some of us went to, and that's, municipal league is what that is for that we all went to. And what I got out of that the most was that it was, it's great to hear that the legislators are correcting a bad decision that they made several years ago regarding the penalties for auto theft. Because, you know, to reduce the theft penalty for lower-dollar cars was very damaging to a lot of people. So, I'm encouraged that they're correcting themselves, that's great. Also, I did attend the Arapahoe Transportation Meeting. And in fact, Councilmember Grove, you had mentioned the underpass. Right now, I believe that funding's going to be put on hold for a while. There's a lot of projects. Our public work director has more information on, but I think right now, it's not on hold permanently, it's just, it's not getting, I think, is it the funding it's not getting? Maybe the city manager knows...
Councilmember, I missed the first...
Was it County Line and Broadway, I believe? Is that where it is?
The Highline Canal at Arapahoe and Broadway?
Yeah. I think I should, I would like to just kind of confirm that status and get information back out to council.
Yeah, it seemed like the funding was, was still being haggled over yet right now. Our public work director's on top of it, though, so that's great. Oh, and let's see, and last but not least, oh, we did have a, our study session last week on the census. I thought that was a very good study session for folks that didn't get a chance to see it. Go to Channel 8, and you can watch that. It's the beginning of the meeting. Was it, was it the first item? I think it was, yeah. First item on there, and it was a very worthwhile meeting to watch. And regarding, Councilmember, a comment regarding the youth, not as many youth as we used to, and it doesn't surprise me as much as we scare them about how bad that we're... and it doesn't surprise me as much as we scare them about how bad that we're destroying everything, and the future is bleak, so it doesn't surprise me that there, people aren't making kids like they used to. All right, that is it. Thank you.
I don't know how to follow that.
You don't have to.
All right, just a couple of updates. First of all, I just want to thank all the applicants to the authorities' boards and commissions. We had the interviews a little bit ago. I see some people in the audience, so thank you. We had a great group of people, almost four dozen people apply. It was great to see all the, the quality that we have here in Littleton that want to support our community and, and get involved. Second item is, I believe it was Councilmember Barr, that reminded us that it's daylight savings coming this weekend. So, so yeah, so Saturday, I think it's on the, is it on the 12th, the 11th? So don't forget about daylight savings, it's the fun one where we spring ahead and lose an hour of sleep.
That's the worst I've probably.
Most important, maybe. Last week, I went to the Primrose School down on Mineral and read to one of their preschool classes for their Read Across America. If anyone's got young kids, I read a, a book called The Book With No Pictures. I had to read it twice because the kids liked it so much. So if you don't, if you're not familiar with it, it's The Book With No Pictures by B.J. Novak. It's a great, great book for, for little ones. Last Friday, I also was a panelist on the South Metro Chamber City Updates, the regional perspective panel that they did with, there were six mayors from Castle Pines, Inglewood, Centennial, Greenwood Village, Littleton, and Lone Tree. It was hosted at the Lone Tree Art Center. We talked about housing, we talked about economic development, safety, and it was good to mingle with some of the, the people that were there for the, the chamber. And then lastly, I was fortunate enough to sit in a room for like four hours yesterday to watch the vice president, who was in town, speak to a group of people here. Talked about climate change, and the issues they talked about were basically water, agriculture, natural disasters, family and maternal health, and then surprisingly, national security with the issues that conflict that climate change can cause. So quite a wide range of topics there, but it was great to see the vice president here in town, and great to represent Littleton. There were mayors from probably ten other communities there, and county commissioners and whatnot, so that was a fun event. So that's all I have with that. All right. Next up, we have item six, which was moved ahead of item five. And I'll have to thank you to Councilmember Milliman for raising this up here, but it's not every day that we're in the presence of a Hall of Famer here. So I'm going to read a proclamation, and then we'll have the, the scheduled appearance here. So this is a proclamation of the City of Littleton, Colorado, recognizing the induction of Libby Bortz into the Colorado Women's Hall of Fame in the state of Colorado. Whereas Libby Bortz was born in New York and raised to appreciate service to community, and whereas Libby moved to Littleton in the 1960s, and when not admitted to the University of Colorado Medical School, sued and won, she would later sit on the University of Colorado Medical School's Admissions Committee. And whereas Libby earned a master's degree at the University of Denver and became a highly-accomplished licensed clinical social worker dedicating her life to the assistance of women, the poor, and the elderly. And whereas Libby served on the Littleton Council on Human Relations, which brought Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. to Littleton in 1964. And whereas Libby served on the Littleton Housing Authority from 1971 to 2017. And whereas Libby was named Littleton's Outstanding Citizen in 1973. And whereas in 1974, Libby was instrumental in getting the Equal Credit Opportunity Act passed for women to get credit, not based on gender, Libby became one of the first women to get a credit card in her name. And whereas Libby Bortz Assisted Living is named in her honor because of her care for the elderly and her many years of volunteer service on the Board of the Littleton Housing Authority. Now therefore, I, Kyle Schlechter, Mayor of the City of Littleton, do hereby proclaim congratulations to Libby Bortz for her induction into the Colorado Women's Hall of Fame and her dedication to the people of Littleton. So the city has put together a short video. We're moving on to the scheduled appearances now. Put together a short video. We'll have the clerk play that.
The City of Littleton congratulates Libby Bortz on her induction to the Colorado Women's Hall of Fame. Libby Bortz exemplifies community service. Since arriving in Littleton in 1960, Bortz has spent decades leading efforts to improve the lives of seniors, women, youth, and people in need. In the 1960s, Bortz served on Littleton's Council for Human Relations, where she spearheaded the creation of Bradley House, a home for seniors, veterans, and adults with disabilities. Her work to improve housing for the disadvantaged led to the creation of Littleton's Housing Authority in 1970, and the acquisition of the Amity Plaza Affordable Housing Complex and dozens of scattered-site homes. Most notably, Bortz spearheaded the creation of the assisted living home near downtown Littleton that bears her name, an honor bestowed by her colleagues to recognize her tireless efforts for seniors. Bortz stood firm in the face of gender discrimination. When she was turned down for admission to the University of Colorado's Medical School, she sued and won. Later, she sat on the university's Medical School Admissions Committee. Libby Bortz also led causes for women. She helped set up women's resource centers around Colorado and served on the state's Commission on the Status of Women. Through her efforts as a social worker, Bortz established the Women's Resource Center at Arapahoe Community College and helped create a women's studies program. Libby Bortz's induction into the Colorado Women's Hall of Fame follows numerous other honors, including a lifetime achievement award from the Colorado chapter of the National Association of Social Workers and the Outstanding Alumni Award from the University of Denver Graduate School of Social Work. Through the years, Libby Bortz left her mark on Littleton. Countless lives have been improved through her tireless devotion to community and people in need. Thank you, Libby, on behalf of everyone in the City of Littleton.[1015.82][1015.82](APPLAUSE).
So I'd like to invite Libby up to the podium here, and I'll present her the proclamation and see if she has a few words.
(INAUDIBLE) I'm sitting down there and thinking that I'm looking at the Supreme Court. It, you have an awesome kind of presence. The last time I was here, there was a different kind of setup, so it's been a while. I want to thank you, and I want to thank the City of Littleton, because when I moved here, with my parents telling me that it was important to have an educated heart as well as an educated mind, I was, I found Littleton a place where I could live that out, starting with the civil rights movement in the 60s, when we tried to integrate housing in Littleton. And moving on then to recognizing that there were lots of people who were in need of housing. We did a community survey, found people living in garages below the ground, and we had a city council that said, when we appealed for the establishment of a housing authority, okay, we'll do it. We were the first suburb in the Region Eight area to establish a housing authority, and the first to build an assisted living center ultimately for people with modest incomes, to say the least. Littleton supported the establishment of a youth employment program, as I recall, a homemaker's program so that people could remain in their homes rather than have to go into nursing homes. There were so many things that the city did support, and it was a place that you, you knew there was caring and concern about citizens. So I believe that's continuing on. You have your challenges. I've unfortunately had to move to a half-block from the city line to Douglas County, and I'm frankly embarrassed when I tell people that I live in Douglas County. But I give you credit for the opportunity to make life better for people who live not just here, but in many other places. So thank you very much.[1232.42][1232.42](APPLAUSE).
Councilmember Valdez?
Thank you, Mayor. I had the pleasure of serving with Libby on the Housing Authority many, at the turn of the century, so to say. But, but one of the things that Libby did not want was for Libby Bortz's property to be named after her. And, and as you can see, it, it obviously was, and legend has it that Libby, or the board, took advantage of a meeting that Libby missed, and they voted to name the property after her. So thank you, Libby.
Thank you.
Councilmember Millman?
Hi. Hi, Libby. I'm so excited to meet you tonight or to see you, and I'm so impressed, and you feel like you're in awe of us, we're in awe of you, truly, and everything that you've done for this community. And we want to carry on your legacy. We want to carry on that fire, that desire to bring in inclusion and equity. You know, we, you know, we face hurdles every day, the city staff, city council, we get criticized for trying to increase affordable housing in every which way possible. But when we hear those criticisms, I'm always going to think of you, and I'm going to honor that legacy that you've brought to this city, and we will continue to fight for affordable housing in every which way that we can. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, and so it's such an honor to have you so connected to Littleton's history here. And I want to thank everyone that showed up tonight to show respect and honor to Libby here. It's great to see so many people in the audience rather than just one or two people, but it's great to come up for.
Can I just tell you?
You, you may, please do, please do.
Even though I'm from Douglas County now. When we were allocated the Bradley House, which named Bradley, our first senior building, unfortunately, rather quickly, the Nixon administration withdrew the allocation. And so after appealing to all our congressional people and our whoever else in the world we could appeal to, the last resort, I felt, was to shame the government. And so we organized a senior citizens demonstration with the television stations, radio stations, very happy, they love things like that, so they were happy to be there. And when that was forwarded to Washington, somehow the allocation was reallocated to us. When I went down to HUD to sign the documents, the director of HUD, who was very annoyed at my having gone over his head in many ways, said to me, "Just remember, baby, you'll never get into the men's locker room at the Y." And I, it was one of the few times when you can think quickly on your feet and respond. That frankly has never been my aspiration. But my aspiration is fulfilled tonight, to be here to say thank you for all that you have done. So thanks.
Thank, thank you.[1453.83][1453.83](APPLAUSE). All right, the next item on our agenda is public comment. If you wish to address city council during the public comment period, please sign in on the speaker form where the city clerk is grabbing it from right now. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. I will let you know if you've reached your time. City council is not authorized by Colorado Open Meeting Laws to discuss, comment, or take action at the meeting on issues raised by public comment. That is not part of tonight's agenda. I ask all people in the audience to be respectful of those speaking and remain silent. I may refer matters to the city manager or city attorney for immediate comment after public comment, or to have staff, staff provide additional information and report back to the council as appropriate. We have several people signed up for public comment here tonight. It looks like we have seven people. First up, we have Karen Talan-Tire.
Sorry, need to do anything here?
If you can speak closer to the mic there. Thank you.
Since we have an election today, I wanted to come and talk about how our elections are fragile, too complex, too many moving parts, and too expensive. Furthermore, Arapahoe County voter rolls are a joke. According to the Voter Statistics page, and I would ask you to go there and check me on this, it says we have a 117-year-old Republican lady in Inglewood who just discovered her civic duty and signed up a few months ago, even though Wikipedia says the oldest person in the world is 115. Oh, wait, she just turned 116 two days ago, in Spain. We also have three centenarians who somehow have gone for over 100 years without figuring out their gender. And on the other end of the spectrum, we have 3,663 active voters who are 17 and 16 years old. According to the website, all active voters receive a ballot. I wonder where the 16-year-olds' ballots go. Littleton currently lets Arapahoe run its elections, but Littleton can take back the responsibility, and I suggest we do. We can certainly do better than this ridiculous county. The most expensive parts of elections, mail-in ballots and election computers, are also fraud magnets because they are complex and non-transparent. Nobody has yet explained why my neighbor received a ballot for someone who had not lived in that house for at least 14 years, and nobody has explained what, other than her honesty kept my neighbor from voting on that ballot, because we don't know if anybody checked signatures, and they could never trace it back to her anyway. There is no chain of custody for ballots that go through the mail, and we have no way of knowing whether the cameras on the drop boxes are turned on or in focus or monitored. Voting in person on the same day would eliminate all these problems. It can in fact take hours to count ballots, as compared to minutes by machine, but it still should be easily finished election night. This worked just fine everywhere for over 200 years before we started using machines. Now in many places, machines take weeks to count for no apparent reason, and the controversy lasts months or years. Hand-counting paper ballots is far cheaper than using machines. Some people worry about voter access. I am concerned about how any voter knows whether or not they have been disenfranchised since, unless they are an IT professional and have access to the machines, which nobody except the Secretary of State actually has access to the machines. I for one am being tired of, tired of being told to trust the experts. We need to go to a system of literally transparent ballot boxes, which go directly to public hand-counting, so any 18-year-old graduate of public education can see with their own eyes that their vote was counted. I heard a lot of complaints about the cost of today's election, but I have not seen a cost breakdown, though I have requested that the city manager provide me one. I can only assume that if I have to ask, I can't afford it. I asked the council to compare the price of locally-run, in-person, hand-counted elections on paper ballots to what we have now. I think you'll be pleasantly surprised.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Kate Eckel.
Good evening, city council. My ask is that you share with me, I'm now going to start art date with Kate, and so we have some great stuff coming down the pike that I just wanted to share with you as a private citizen. Littleton's Voices West Choral Performance this weekend, it's called Starry, Starry Night. It's based on Vincent van Gogh, the guy who chopped off his ear, and they say art can be boring. Anyway, I am going to be at St. Tim's Episcopal Church on Sunday at 2:30. Would love to have you join me. Littleton Ballet, Snow White, is April 15th at the Lone Tree Art Center. Let's see here, Littleton Museum, A Colorful Dream Exhibit, from June 16th to August 9th. Town Hall Arts Center, our emerald and our crown jewel, is doing La Caja Fall. I will be there on April 14th on Friday, so I'd love to have you guys join me. The Littleton Symphony, Friday, March 31st, I will be there for their performance. And then for those of you that don't know, In Collective Art Gallery down at Aspen Grove, if you haven't been there, incredible art gallery, and I really encourage you to join me. So a little bit earlier today, I got to go to the Colorado Business So, a little bit earlier today, I got to go to the Colorado Business Committee of the Arts, and this is their economic impact, and hopefully, Littleton will be able to produce this in the upcoming years. So, the impact that the arts have. So, in 2020, in Colorado, $435 million of economic impact, 9,688 jobs, 8 million people attended arts performances throughout Colorado, giving to the arts $225 million, and education outreach to 2 million children. So, hopefully, we can have some numbers for you guys soon. So, anyway, please join me. I have blue hair and pink shoes. It's going to be a good time, and I look forward to seeing all of you there. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next up, Paul Carlini.
I'm a lifelong resident of Littleton. I'm here to voice my concern about the crossing at the High Line Canal in Windermere, which is just south of Heritage High School. Some of you might be aware of my emails I have sent regarding this problem. It is a public safety concern, and it's a dangerous crosswalk. I'm an avid runner, and so I'm not just speaking for myself, but for bicyclists, pedestrians, school kids that cross there every day. There is nothing to deter, or slow down, I should say, approaching vehicles that go through that crosswalk, and it's dangerous. I almost been hit there at least a half a dozen times, and I'm worried. I really am worried. I've been in contact with Keith Christer, Christer, Rister?
Reaster.
Reaster, okay.
It's called worse.
Okay, sure. And, you know, we've been going back and forth, and this is, my concern has been going on for, you know, four or five years or longer. And, you know, I was able to get Keith to put a yield sign in the middle of that crosswalk, which frankly doesn't really do any good, because vehicles just blow right through there and, you know, go right past it. I was able to get a yield to pedestrian sign put up, and it simply doesn't help. So, I am here to ask more to be done. I've suggested speed bumps, but Keith says that's not, that won't be appropriate for the snowplow to come and plow the roads during the winter. I suggested stop signs, and I know that bridge is going to be reconstructed here coming up in 2024, I think. And I suggested, why not put the High Line path underneath? Go underneath the road if they're going to redo that bridge. So, something needs to be done there, and the way it is-
Thank you, Mr. Carlini. That's your three minutes. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Next up, Pam Chadbourne.
I'm trying to click it, but it's selected. Oh, dear. Good.
There we go.
And somewhere is full page.
The down arrows will work.
Down arrow is full page. Somewhere there's something that's full page. Sorry, I forgot full page.
City attorney, you're just going to make it worse, so. Thanks, council. Sorry about that. Pam Chadbourne, a little blocking now from here. The census and the February 14 Geneva Village presentations left a couple of things sticking in my mind, so I wanted to bring some scattered thoughts. I want to ask for quarterly statuses by staff to city council and the public, and this is, staff would provide us with updates on city performance and status metrics. You may notice we don't have any performance and status metrics. And so, what I think is, would be really exciting, people talk about excitement all the time, I'd be excited to hear council talk about and identify decision drivers and indicators of good achievement in the city. What are measures of livability? I was dismayed that council changed livability to vibrant. Livability is a huge achievement. It is hard to do. You inherited a livable city. I think it's getting less livable by every decision. So, let's see what you think performance and status metrics are, and then let's have staff bring those to all of us. On the next page, I'm going to point out a table I made back in 2019, presented to council. You know what it is? It's approvals of rezonings, and in this case, almost all of them were retail or office property rezoned to residential. So, the first problem here is, do we have an economic problem as we go forward? Have we gone too far getting rid of retail, income properties, and job properties with offices and making them residential, which don't pay their way? So, you'll notice that I've got 1,767 living units, and I knew we didn't have 50,000 people in the city because I already counted the units, and I'm going to tell you, I'm not paid to do that. We have staff to do that. Let's have staff bring that, please, council, to all of us quarterly. And I put on the previous page a number of other financials, public works, and then report on our partnerships. So, my second item is Geneva Village, and it provides benefits to our city and people. Senior low-cost housing, but it's also in Littleton's town square, and this is a wonderful thing that should be kept in perpetuity for Littleton. It consists of the government, city center. It consists of senior housing that we provide. It's of value to us in a historic building, which we value, and it is a key asset in the mid-century modern overlay district, which we should be doing now. It is an unmatched opportunity for a city's value statement or branding on the north gateway to our downtown district. And it's also a city property asset in our portfolio. And my last page is a map of the remaining Sternberg properties. I don't think it's quite complete, but we've lost two. You can see the north gateway. This is only one of two residential left, and look, it's ACC Heritage High School. Please consider preserving Geneva Village and investing in it. Thanks.
Thank you. Next up is Robin Bernstein.
First of all, I want a world that works for everybody, not just the city council or the developers or the ULUC, but also Geneva Village and all the homeless. My cats are included in that, the trees, the birds, the ducks, all of it. Another thing, I want to thank Jim Blucklenberg, our city manager, for visiting Geneva Village. That was nice. I'm sure you saw the possibilities, you know, and, you know, we can go from there. And I don't want to alienate you, Jerry Valdez, but I did call SMHO, you know, the day after our meeting, the 214, the day after. I did not get an answer. So, then I called again two weeks later, and I got an answer. They've been closed, Jerry, the waiting list. They've been closed for three years. The guy keeps telling me, "Call back, lady." That's just to clarify the whole thing.
It's Valdez, by the way.
Valdez, sorry. I'm sorry. Okay.
I did. I erroneously reported that. I'm so sorry.
Pardon me?
I erroneously reported that. I apologize.
Reported what?
That there was vacancies.
Okay. All right. Well, anyway, I did check it out. Okay. I'm also somewhat concerned about the Littleton Independent article on February 23 about Geneva Village. It was somewhat concerning under option one. It says rehab of Geneva Village would nullify the health and safety concerns of properties' conditions while preserving affordable housing. You know what, you guys? I have no concerns. You know, I'm more concerned about the speeding vehicles and the bad sidewalks and what the other guy was saying, the pedestrian. You know, when I'm walking, you know, I could get killed at any moment in time. Thank God I know how to do it, because I make them look at me, you know. But, and also, another troublesome area is, you know, the vacant units at Geneva Village. It's kind of disturbing, because I'm walking everywhere. I see the exorbitant need for housing, and then we have all these vacant units that are perfectly good. You know, mine's perfect, by the way.
Can you speak into the mic and address the council? Please, thank you.
Yes. Okay. And Keith Reaster said that Geneva Village needs appliances. You know, I don't want a dishwasher. Updated windows, we already got that done. That BBC and AEI, or whatever it was, I researched all of this. On-site parking management, I don't need a manager. I don't have a car. You know, I'm more concerned about the speeding vehicles, you guys, and we don't need it. He says we need an architect. We don't need one. We have Eugene Sternberg. Jody and I did research, three months of it last year, on Eugene Sternberg. We have the documents if you want to see it, you guys. And also-
Thank you, Robin. That's your three minutes.
Really?
Yeah. Next up, Katie Karen.
Good evening, city council. Thanks for having me. My name is Katie Karen, and I am a professor at Arapahoe Community College, and I work in the Art and Design Center, and I was coming today to tell you just about some of the events that we're having in relation to the art department. So, we are currently showing Littleton Public School District K through 12 in our main gallery, and then after that, it'll be the Cherry Creek School District High School Exhibition. And then, March 23 through May 5 will be Arapahoe Community College Student and Alumni Invitational, and that's going to be a really interesting, more conceptual-driven show with some installations. We are also going to be having a big sort of pop-up exhibition for the community at Aspen Grove, April 20 through May 21, and the reception is open to the public and free. The opening reception will be April 20 from 5 to 7 p.m. So, we hope you guys can join us. We're also going to have our annual holiday pottery sale right after, right before Mother's Day. So, please come out and enjoy the art. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Last up, signed up is Kyle Henderson, but I think Kyle left. Is anybody else that wish to speak? Seen no one. I'm going to move on to consent agenda. Consent agenda items can be adopted by a simple motion. All ordinances must be read by title prior to the vote of the motion. Any consent agenda item may be removed at the request of a council member. Item A, ID 23 of 27. Yes? City manager?
We were conferring about potential response to one of the items. Actually, there could be a couple, but I'll defer to the mayor.
Go ahead, if you want to respond, yeah.
Well, I think today especially, it's important that we underscore several of our election procedures statewide and in Littleton that do, that should really inspire confidence, I feel, from our community and really from the state. I'll just mention that, you know, the voter rolls used by Arapahoe County are the same rolls that would be used by all counties and all municipalities who would manage their own elections. Those voter rolls are maintained by the Secretary of State. So, there really is just one set of data, one database for elections, and that's maintained by the Secretary of State. I'll also just note that once you jump into the actual election, the ballot processing operation, and I really won't go into much detail, but the fact that everything that happens in the process, from transporting ballots to that counting facility, through every step of the process, is conducted by volunteer election judges who are made up of teams of two, one from each political party, in everything that happens, where signatures are verified to make sure that those ballots are indeed valid from those voters through all the rest of those steps. And then I'll also mention, because the speaker mentioned the machines versus, or the reliability of machines versus hand-counting, there's an extensive process that happens from the time the city receives the machines, again, with teams of bipartisan election judges and any public observers who'd like to watch. They're called logic and accuracy testing that happens where ballots are counted by machine, and then they're counted by hand to make sure that they match. So, those are just a few of the steps in place that I'd like to just, you know, remind the council and the public that underpin our election system. So, I think we should have confidence. The only other point that I would mention, our staff has been working with Mr. Carlini on the pedestrian concerns at the High Line Canal and Trail and Broadway. As council may know, that is one of many trail intersections with our major collectors in town, where we're constantly evaluating safety. The improvements, as the speaker noted, we have made some improvements there, and we're always considering what more can be done within the larger context of all the needs that we have for such safety projects and the funding that would be needed for those. So, it's an ongoing discussion with our transportation engineers that we are taking seriously. I think those are the two where I'll leave it, Mayor.
Great, thanks. And I believe it's in our charter that it's mail-in ballots, so it would be another special election to change the charter to get away from that. All right. Actually, consent agenda. Item A is ID 23 of 27. Motion to approve authority board and commission appointments. Item B is ordinance four of 2023, an ordinance on first reading amending ordinance 23, series of 2022, known as the Annual Appropriation Bill for all municipal purposes of the city of Littleton, counties of Arapahoe, Douglas, and Jefferson, state of Colorado, for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2023, and ending December 31, 2023. C, ordinance six of 2023, an ordinance on first reading amending the 2023 Littleton Sewer Utility Enterprise Budget. D, ordinance seven of 2023, an ordinance on first reading amending the 2023 Littleton Storm Water and Flood Management Utility Enterprise Budget. E, ordinance five of 2023, an ordinance on first reading amending Title III, Chapter Nine of Municipal Code Regarding Retail Sales and Use Tax. F, ID 2316, motion to approve minutes of the February 7, 2023, regular meeting of city council. Mayor? Counselor member?
I move to approve A, B, C, D, E, F.
Second. We have a motion and a second from Counselor Barr. Is there any questions or discussion, anything? Seen nothing. I will open the vote. Maybe, there we go. I'm pushing it as well. Let's, clerk, can we just do a thumbs up, thumbs down on this one?
You bet.
Great. Thumbs up is for, thumbs down is against.
The vote is seven in favor. The motion carries unanimously.
Great, thank you. All right. Then we have general business. We have one item in general business. We have Resolution 19 of 2023. It's a resolution approving an amended intergovernmental agreement for the Tri-Cities Homeless Action Plan. This is just a resolution, an ordinance on second reading. There is no public hearing. We will have a brief presentation by the city manager to tell us about this if the city attorney doesn't pull his computer off of my room. I believe Mike Sangran is also here to answer any questions, if there are any, but after councils get their questions answered, then we can just go straight to a motion, a second- council's got their questions answered, then we can just go straight to a motion, a second of vote. So, City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. So back in the early twenty-twenty-two, the council approved the Tri-Cities Homelessness Action Plan, along with our neighbors of Englewood and Sheridan. In March of twenty-twenty-two, the council approved an IGA to govern how that funding would work among the city. Littleton pays forty-five percent of the costs that have been approved.
Excuse me. Can, do we have a presentation that we can show the public?
You don't have a PowerPoint presentation, do you?
I see what's...
You know, I...
I just see the acknowledgements, the table of conscience.
So with the documents, we have the resolution, we have amended IGA.
Okay.
It's just some documents. We have all the documents, and they're available.
And there's a chart I'll mention for council and for the public, showing the detailed cost within the, within the staff communication. So at that point, the framework was put in place for governing how we move the IGA forward, and at that point also, the council, you know, it was settled that as the specific programs, as it was time to fund and move forward with the specific components of the action plan, the IGA could be amended. So that's what we're here for tonight. The Tri-Cities group is ready to move forward with several more of these programs that are part of the action plan. The total amount, I'll note, of the action plan has not changed, and these components have been in there for some time, and the council can see that they include things like creating the Tri-Cities webpage, creating a lived experience advisory board, strengthening the outreach to landlords, streamlining the volunteer and giving opportunities for the Tri-Cities efforts, creating an online platform to request services, and also increasing the local government just capacity in each city based on the municipality's needs. So the total for all of those, for the whole Tri-Cities coalition, is seventy-five thousand dollars. You'll see that Littleton's portion of that, again, is forty-five percent, or thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. So this, the resolution tonight would approve that next kind of tranche of projects, and also confirm how we'll be funding this, and essentially, the county has agreed to be the funding recipient, and then bill the cities on a reimbursement basis once these expenditures are made. I will note that we have, that this is an incremental step through the action plan. Couple of the larger, these are kind of the smaller and more modest items that we're ready to move forward with now. A couple of the larger items, such as the Housing Navigation Center, and a couple other that are still to be completed, will be brought forward when, for another amendment, when those items are ready. So with that, Council, we're just looking for your commitment, your continued commitment to the Tri-Cities Homelessness Action Plan, kind of finally committing an additional thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars of the amount you've already allocated in the budget for the action plan. Glad to be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions, Council? Councilmember Barr?
Yeah, just a real quick clarification. So, you know, the total amount has not changed. This is just a portion of the allocation that was already set in the action plan. Is there a particular reason that we are approving them tranche by tranche, and not the entirety of the allotment for that action plan at a single point in time?
I know that the, the Policy Committee is taking these as they're ready because we want to make sure that the specific initiatives, specifically things like the Navigation Center, and some of those larger items are actually scoped correctly, that, you know, there's still work to be done to determine exactly what we're going to need. So we're bringing these to you once we know when those programs are needed and what specifically they look for. We also, I know I had heard from Sam Fox that it was just a kind of point of accountability along the way, that we bring these back to you when we're ready as a point, as opposed to the entire, you know, three-year plan that was approved back in, in early twenty-twenty-two.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? I have a question. So I do know each of the other cities is doing this as well, approving the IGA. I know Englewood has done though, done this. Do you know Sheridan has had this on their agenda?
Not sure if they've taken action, but we're trying to all do it at about the same time.
Yeah, I know Englewood's was, I think, was the last week or two weeks, so, yeah. So this is, you know, it's not something that just Littleton's doing. All three of the communities are moving forward like this, so. Any other questions? Seen none? Is there a motion then?
I move to approve Resolution Nineteen dash twenty-twenty-three, approving an amended IGA with Arapahoe County and the Cities of Englewood and Sheridan for the implementation of the Tri-Cities Homelessness Action Plan.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion at all? I think this makes sense, so I believe we will try voting it again here. Last time it did get the votes, but it didn't show us the individual voters there. Let's see if this does it. The red is... Has everyone voted? Let's just see. I'm going to, yep. I know. Let's do close. I see seven to zero here. Do you see that anywhere? It doesn't show it up there. So let's just do thumbs up again. Just to verify that, okay.
The vote is seven in favor. The motion carries unanimously.
Great. Thank you so much. All right. We have no ordinances on second reading, so last up, item eleven, adjournments. We are adjourned.